And all public attendees are invited to participate in the meeting. If you would like to make a comment or ask a question, use the raise your hand function. And we will allow you to speak, we will recognize you, and you can also put questions in the chat at any time. Okay, welcome. We've already had two subcommittee meetings before this, so hello again. Let's see, who do we have as a visitor? Do we have anyone?
Me, I'm chowing down my dinner, sorry.
Hello, you're from the events program, right?
I am.
Shannon Mason, okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Is there any other, are there any other guests?
Ashley and Jerome.
Oh, okay, hello. Jerome and Ashley Hartmeyer-Prigg, okay. All right, I think we put you at the very beginning, the city council candidates. Is that Ashley? She's higher on my list, so I'm gonna allow her to go first, and I think we allotted five minutes.
Ellen, can we have everybody mute themselves because there is some noise on the, on the line? I think, Himanda, you are not on mute.
I don't have that power, but yes, Linda Wheeler and Himinder. Thank you. Okay, we're going to give five minutes to Ashley, go ahead.
Hi, thank you so much, Ellen. Hello, everyone, my name is Ashley Hartmeyer-Prigg, and I'm running for Beaverton City Council, seat one. I grew up in Beaverton and spent a lot of time at the library back when it was on Allen. We could walk there from our house. I lived in Beaverton and Oroloa for nearly my entire life, with the exception of college where I attended the University of Portland. I even commuted from Beaverton to law school in Salem. I'm currently the Chair of the Board of Directors of the Twelveth and Hills Park and Recreation District. And at THPRD, we've seen the importance of regional relationships. We've seen the importance of government acting in service to the people. And I believe my leadership experience at THPRD has prepared me to serve on the city council. We passed an affordable housing policy that will help bring over 600 affordable units to the area. We partnered to host shelters for people experiencing homelessness in our spaces during COVID-19 closures. And we created a new naming process for parks and trails to truly reflect the rich diversity of our community. I am proud to be endorsed by our Washington County Chair, Catherine Harrington, our Metro President, Lynn Peterson, and our Beaverton Mayor, Lacy Beatty. Partnerships like this across our region are the types of partnerships needed for navigating our COVID-19 recovery, for creative solutions for affordable housing, and for doing our part to reverse climate change. I'm also proud to be endorsed by the Beaverton Area Chamber of Commerce, the Twelveth and Valley Firefighters Union, and the Beaverton Education Association. And I share this because I believe that the relationships I've built mean that I will hit the ground running in service to the residents of Beaverton. Thank you for having me today, and thank you for your time and service to our community by serving on this committee. I'm gonna leave it at that, and if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, go ahead and put your contact information in the chat, Ashley, in case anyone wants to get ahold of you. Oh, no, sorry. Lanny, you can't do that?
Yeah, I'm sorry, just put, just not the website.
Just our email?
Just your email.
That's just my, yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay. Jerome, you have five minutes.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Jerome Sabayan, and I am running for Beaverton City Council because I am a public servant, and I want to serve the people of Beaverton with honor, integrity, and respect. My platform is based on the principle that government exists to serve all of the people. I am the son of Filipino immigrants, and I was raised in Salem. I now live in the Bose neighborhood, a few blocks south of the main library. My word is my bond. I am a veteran. I am a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel, and I served for 28 years in war and peace around the world and throughout the United States. I am a licensed professional engineer with bachelor's and master's degrees in civil engineering. As a former Public Works Director, I understand the importance of infrastructure to a resilient and sustainable city and community. I am an educator with masters and doctorate degrees in history and political science. I have taught courses at Portland State University on healthcare inequities and human rights. I currently teach graduate courses on national security and critical thinking at the Army War College. Like you, I am a community volunteer. I have served the people of Beaverton through the Human Rights Advisory Commission, Social Services Funding Committee, Beaverton Severe Weather Shelter, Community Emergency Response Team, Beaverton School District Bond Accountability Committee, Metro's Get Moving 2020 Transportation Infrastructure Investment Team, and Home Plate for Homeless Youth Board of Directors. I also serve with Engineers Without Borders, Community Engineering Corps, and Education First Scholarship Foundation, all benefiting traditionally underserved communities. I am grateful that my military pension and ongoing teaching allows me to continue my long tradition of public service and to self-fund my campaign. If elected, I will donate all after-tax counselor compensation to local nonprofits doing good right here in Beaverton. I want to thank you for your service on what I call the House of Representatives for the Beaverton City Government. I know firsthand the personal investment in time and energy it takes to voluntarily serve the people of Beaverton. I am not a politician, I am a public servant. I will serve our city with honor, integrity, and respect. And I hope I have your vote for Beaverton City Council in this special election. And I will type my email address in the chat as well, and hope to connect with some of you at a later date. And again, I thank you for your time.
And we'll see you both on Thursday for the debate. Good luck to you both. Okay, now we're gonna turn it over to Shannon. You have 10, sorry, 15 minutes for city events update. Shannon, I think you're muted.
Okay. I trust you can see the screen, yeah? Great. So thank you for having me tonight. I am the Events Manager for the city of Beaverton, and I have-
I don't see the full screen. Can you-
Backify it.
What are you seeing right now?
We can just see, just number one and part of number two, so if you could just large it.
Add it to full screen.
Yeah.
Okay. I shall attempt, for some reason it doesn't want to show the... Let me stop sharing for a second and see if I can sort this out. I think we'll just have to do it this way. Now can you see? Let me see.
Oh, you're not sharing.
Yeah, I'm trying. Do you have the ability to have me share screen? Because I no longer have access to the Zoom screen. Hang on, I may have figured it out. Okay. Now can you see things?
Yeah, we can see.
Okay.
It's not full screen, but we can see.
Yeah, it doesn't-
Your OneNote right now, are you trying to show?
You want to show your PowerPoint, right?
It should be showing PowerPoint. Now you can see PowerPoint? Excellent. Many apologies for all of the difficulties. I don't generally use PowerPoint when I do this presentation. But, okay, so let's chat. What I'm gonna talk to you about tonight is how we adjusted during COVID for 2020, and what we learned and how we're adjusting for 2021, what events we're offering this summer, and kind of a little bit about what you should know if you're trying to plan events as well. So our goals after 2020, since we tried to adjust most of our events to online virtual events while still honoring the typical events that happen in Beaverton, like the celebration parade and winter lights. The virtual aspects of events are kind of, people are burnt out this year is what we've learned. And so we are trying to adjust and shift to more frequent in-person events that are smaller and follow COVID guidelines. So that was our takeaway from 2020 and the adjustments that we're making for 2021. Our goal is to support the feelings of connection within the community and the city while offering respite and safe interaction, and to get people off the internet and back into the real world and having some fun and relaxation. Some of the safety precautions that we will be administering, and you also should keep in mind if you're planning any events, are limited numbers of participants, controlled entry and exits. We are having timed registration for some events. And of course, we're doing masks and social distancing. So for May, there are a number of events that are exciting. We have the Beaverton Night Market Vendor Applications are open, which I want to make you aware of. Beaverton Night Market will happen in August on the 13th and 14th, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later. Welcoming Week is happening in September, and the grant applications are open for that as well until the 31st of May. And the, we are doing a Wellness Series event in Saturdays in May. So the first one that we'll be doing is Saturday, May 1st, and it's a meditative art event where you will be given various art supplies, and we have an instructor who will lead the participants through meditative art. We are capping this event at 50 people, and we do have a preregistration. That'll be followed by a Tai Chi and meditation event in the park on Saturday, May 8th, and then there will be another on May 22nd, and we're capping that at 50 as well. We have a number of yoga events that will be happening on Saturday, May 15th. We have active yoga. We have adaptive yoga for people who have special needs. And we have yoga for Spanish speakers that will be led in Spanish for our Spanish-speaking community. And Saturday, May 29th, we have therapeutic horticulture, or what I like to call relaxing with plants. And this is gonna be a whole lot of fun. We have two sessions that are gonna be happening. This event is capped at 15 people per session, so a total of 30. And you'll be making some plant things. I'm not sure what to call them at this point, but we are bringing in therapeutic horticulture instructors, and they're going to do that event and lead that. And everyone's going to be able to leave with whatever plant thing that they will be creating. More information on that on the site to follow. In June, we'll be doing a Paint in the Park series every Saturday. The Beaverton Night Market Vendor Applications close, so keep that in mind. And the Beaverton Pride Celebration is happening, June 27th. They will not be doing a parade this year, and they are trying to stay away from any kind of like super outreach marketing because they're trying to limit the number of people at the events, so they're limiting their marketing as well. And for the Paint in the Park, we have The Blue Moon on Saturday, June 5th. We have Playing Coy on Saturday, June 12th. And Bees Are a Buzzin' on the 19th, and Wine Country on the 26th. All of those events will be limited to 20 people, and we are also doing preregistration for those as well. In July, we're working with THPRD again, and they're going to be doing Letters to the Military and the Community Scavenger Hunt rather than the typical larger events that would happen on the 4th of July. And then the West Side Shakespeare Festival is happening. The Experience Theater Project is holding that again this year, July 16th through 18th. In August, as I said, we are doing Beaverton Night Market. There will be some registration available for that event so that people can guarantee their time and make sure that they can get in. We are going to limit the number of people depending on whatever risk level we are at at that particular time. We're fencing the area as much as possible and using some natural barriers too to make sure that we have controlled entry and exit. We have two separate food courts that we're planning so that the rules for food can be followed within those particular areas, and those food vendors will be there. And we're planning to put entertainment in the food areas as well. And then there's also Shakespeare in the Park, August 1 through 3. So events in COVID-19, what you should know. I created an events guideline. I worked with the Washington County COVID Task Force and the emergency management and safety management with the city of Beaverton, and we came up with this guidelines document. I have sent it to Lanny so that she can share it with you later. I've also sent her a document that has verbiage for event websites and social media that outline for people what it is that we're doing to accommodate COVID safety guidelines for events and to keep community members safe. You're welcome to use that verbiage if you'd like, if you're doing any events. And I do want to point out that it's important if you're doing events that you have a plan in case of difficult participants, as not everyone is very excited about following COVID safety guidelines. And hopefully, we won't run into that, but it is important to have a plan in place in case it does come up. I've also sent a document to Lanny to share with you that has some advice on dealing with difficult participants as well, and what to do in that kind of a situation. I'm gonna stop sharing now and answer any questions you might have.
No questions?
No, I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, forget.
The, the first thing with the Shakespeare, about both of the theater things, are they limited in some way?
I believe they do have registration. We just are helping with Experience Theater Project to guide them in what COVID event guidelines are and to connect them with Washington County to make sure that they're following appropriate safety measures. But to my knowledge, yes, there is pre-event registration. I do know that they're selling tickets for the royalty feast or king's feast, as it were. And those are on sale now, if you want to look up their website.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question with regards to audience notification. How are people, how do people know about this? Are there posters in the library or leaflet or any way to get the wider community who might not know?
Yes, and so we have event websites, which I was going to put up in the chat, and I will once I get out of all of my PowerPoint stuff, but I don't want to mess with anything and screw it up right now. So I will put the links to the various events in the chat. And of course, we have the Your City where we do publish those events there too. The library is helping us to market some events. And there's other flyers and things that we're having THPRD help us to hand out too.
Shannon?
Yes.
Will you do a city postcard? Because we have found that that is a really effective tool to use that would have, say, the whole breadth of what you're offering.
We're not doing that this year because we are limiting the events to so small as far as having people sign up for many of them. We may do postcards. I'd imagine we'll do a postcard for like Beaverton Night Market, some of the larger events. Later this year, we're also optimistic that we'll be able to do the tree lighting. So for something like that, something where it's a broader scale of people that can go, then we'll, we'll market it more in the postcards and through mailings and things like that. But we don't want to get it too out there into the world and then have an overwhelming response and have to disappoint people, so.
Like you don't need, you don't want an Easter egg drop or something?
I'm sorry, could you say that again?
What was the one that attracted way too many people, the Easter egg drop or something?
Oh, yeah, yeah, the egg drop, yes, we don't want an egg drop incident.
So in that case, what do you do then, what Sharon was saying? So if you have so many people, are you doing first come first on a first come first tab basis, or?
So we do have the registration for events. We're using Eventbrite. Since our events are free, that's also a free service. And we're setting up various times that people can sign up for, which guarantees that they'll be able to get in at that time. And this is kind of on the down low, but for some events, we will make allowances for people who aren't able to get online or who just happen upon the event, and we'll have some like flexible space to allow people for those to. For events where there's going to be like supplies and things offered, like the Paint in the Park, unless the event doesn't fill up all the way, we won't be able to do that. It will require preregistration. But for things like Beaverton Night Market and stuff, we will make allowances for people who just happen upon the event or don't have access to the internet. And we're also hoping to do some in, like, physical tickets or registrations that'll be available at businesses for Beaverton Night Market as well.
Sorry, I've been involved in THPRD events, so I'm gonna, I've got a lot of questions, so. And do you have like a waitlist? So, because I use THPRD facilities a lot because I have two younger kids. And I feel like the waitlist helps because, for example, let's say I've booked to go swimming and/or, you know, to go on activity, and I've tested positive for COVID. Or I have a family member who have exposure, I will not go, right? I will go and cancel. So do you have like a waitlist for people who that incident may have happened so that they can fall back on?
I'm really glad you asked that question. We plan to have a waitlist for our larger events. We don't for our smaller events. I don't know exactly the, how we're going to work the waitlist for the larger events. We're still trying to figure out all of those details. I'm happy to accept any advice if you have any. But for our larger events, or for our smaller events, rather, if people cancel, there really isn't a good way for us to be able to do a waitlist for that through Eventbrite that I am aware of at this time. And so since we don't have any kind of flexible registration for that event, if people show up and there's, there's free open access and it's not full, we'll allow them in. Yeah. Anything else?
Reading. Any other questions? Oh, well, thank you so much for coming to your presentation. You have a hard job and changing every day, I imagine.
It is indeed. Well, thank you so much, and I will get those links up in your chat.
Thank you. Okay, now we have a presentation. The Creating a Backyard Habitat from Connect. Looks like you only need about five minutes.
Yeah, it's really quickly just reminding people that that we are on May 3rd, which is a Monday, starting at 6 o'clock. There'll be a Zoom meeting, a Zoom presentation of the natural, from the natural gardening and series that we started last year and have made now into a Zoom meeting so that we can invite all of the participants from all the different NACs. And you should, my understanding that is if you are on a NAC email list, you should get a Zoom invite to this presentation. It is being presented by Megan DeMark, who is the Backyard Habitat Program Manager at the Audubon Society. And it will include the tenants of the Backyard Habitat Program, so that includes native plants, invasive plants, pesticides, stormwater management, and creating habitat, as well as something about the Backyard Habitat Program. So if you're interested, we'd love to have you.
The email with the link has not got out yet, correct?
I, I got mine, but I'm not sure if that's-
I already signed up.
You did? Yay! Yes. And I think Miles sent it out. And the information, you have to click on the body of the text to get the information about the event. It is, it may look to you like a Zoom meeting invitation, but it's actually also describes what the program is. But we'll see how that goes.
Okay, any other questions about that? That was a really nice presentation we had last year, and there was a lot of interest. So I'm glad, in a way, that Zoom has enabled us to invite more people. Okay, we're going to move on to the March Minutes. Are there any amendments, any changes?
There was one correction. The spelling of Megan Bronston's last name in the body of the minutes was misspelled.
Thank you, Deborah, and your eagle eyes.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Under Public Presentation, you have Vaccines, and it was Chris Olivera. And Sally has a last name, and I believe it's Pearlman. It was, it said Chris with a last name and Sally with none. And I believe, I believe it's Pearlman, P-E-A-R-L-M-A-N. Which, by the way, I signed up for the program.
Okay, if we did-
Yeah, my husband, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, no, I just wanted to chime in. My husband translated their flyers into Spanish, and I, that was pretty exciting.
I move that we, I move that we adopt the March Minutes as amended this evening.
Thank you, Terry, is there a second? Second from Sharon, thank you. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye, accepting the March Minutes with amendments. We have a majority, thank you very much. Okay, now we have 10 minutes from Allison, our council liaison, thank you.
Thank you, hi, everybody. So I have got five things on my list, but I'm happy to also talk about anything else that anyone is curious about or wants more information on where the council is at. So the first one is the city manager. We have an interim city manager right now named Kurt Wilson. He's been on board with us since January and has done a lot of work to kind of set the stage for the permanent city manager to come in and not just have a first six months of the transition. So the permanent city manager will be able to come in with a lot of systems already in place, a lot of just questions about the clunkiness of transitioning from the form of government we had that this one already kind of figured out. But we're getting closer and closer to that. And as part of that, we have to find the permanent city manager. So we went through the, the job hunt, and we have received a lot of applications and have vetted those and have narrowed the list down, and we'll be entering into interviews tomorrow. And it's going to be all day. Starts at 8:30 in the morning. We also have council meeting tomorrow night. So for the counselors, it's gonna be a marathon from about 8:30 in the morning until, well, they've been averaging about 10 o'clock at night. So it'll be a very long day. But hopefully, at the end of that, we have shortlisted to a couple of really great candidates, and then we'll be having follow-up interviews, not this, the end of this week, but the end of next week. And we're also going to have time for the community to interview those finalists, as well as department heads. People will be able to weigh in on this a lot along the way. It's not just gonna be the council that gets to interact with these candidates by any stretch. So be on the lookout for more information about that. And there should be some invites going out for community, meet the candidates event as well. And then on a couple other topics, in no particular order, you might have seen a recent city council meeting, ODOT came in to give us a presentation on the 217. But in case this has news to anybody, 217, which was built in the 1960s, has been this puzzle piece. No one has quite figured out how to make fit into a changing landscape, and it is just this bottleneck issue even during COVID that you still see of bottlenecking. And that's primarily because it's two lanes through the bulk of Beaverton and has a lot of on-ramps and off-ramps, and we just don't have a lot of wiggle room. So we see a lot of backups happening all the way down and into intersections. It's not safe, and it results in some pretty significant travel time delays for, for people that are trying to get from the 26 to the 5 and everything in between. And after years and years and years, ODOT finally came out with a plan. So they're going to be adding in some auxiliary lanes going through Beaverton. I believe it goes from 99 to, I think Canyon. It's a little late in the day, I'll have to get back to you on that one if you want the specifics. But in addition to that, there's also gonna be some improvements made to the overpasses, including pedestrian and- uh pedestrian and bike facilities that will make it easier, especially on Denny, to get across and uh access the Phantom Creek Trail. Um, so there's a lot that's going to be happening on the two seventeen. And I think the the schedule for that is going to get started in earnest in twenty twenty-two. And so we'll see, we'll see some impacts to um using that that highway for a while, but in the end, we'll hopefully have a lot of the congestion that we currently see alleviated from this project. Um, if you have any other questions about that, I'm I'm happy to talk with you or send you information. So just uh, you know, let me know in the chat if you want more information. I don't know how much time we'll have tonight or how much deep, more deep into the specifics I can get without having the info right in front of me, but I'm excited about that. I figure everyone here has thoughts on it as well. Um, and so then three other items. So we uh have had a report that's basically just been kind of hanging in the air from the Human Rights Advisory Committee um with a series of recommendations all centered around public safety. And um it's been kind of kicked to the side, left and right, due to other pressing matters that have to do with the pandemic, the city manager position, the climate uh Action Task Force Committee and a slew of other things, including the budget. And and you know, it's just, it's time, it's overtime, and so we are going to meet in a roundtable to discuss a timeline for reviewing all the recommendations and and getting to um agreement as a council on if we're going to adopt them as is, if we're not, if we're going to adopt them with concessions. But it'll be a process and we'll be working our way through it. One of those recommendations um is in regards to the Safety Resource Officers that are currently employed through the Portland, uh, sorry, Portland, the Beaverton Police to the the school district. And um that one is a, it's it's a little bit of a different animal because it's um, it's not just the city of Beaverton that's weighing in on that. The school district has to weigh in on that as well as members of the community and the school board and other stakeholders that have um some pretty deep feelings and opinions um and recommendations on this. And so the latest is that the school districts has has offered to enter into a joint process with the city with a third-party facilitator to walk through this. And um I'm personally really excited about that. The council is eager to get started on it and to um look at what the future of public safety within our school system looks like going forward. So um that's also going to be coming up as well. Um, the Climate Action Task Force is going to get formed soon. And this is pretty exciting because there's uh um some some new aspects to how we're going to form that committee that are um could pave the way to how we form future committees or how um folks are um selected for our boards and commissions, and it's to help increase diversity. It's to try and make this um as accessible and possible for folks that don't typically have a lot of um available time to volunteer because of work restrictions or um just impacts that they have in their personal lives. Uh, the task force is one that we want to make sure that we are getting a lot of um voices from marginalized impacted communities, especially communities of color around this topic and young people. So um I'm really excited to see how the process works out and how we test that together. Um, but that is also in the works. And then um lastly, the Fifth Street Projects. Uh, this is happening right across from our park. It's um in central Beaverton and the library. We have two projects that are happening a block away from each other. One is to put in senior affordable housing on the site that is currently the community center. The other is a private developer approach to city about purchasing uh a property that is currently the book corner and um combine it with a parcel next to it to create a a large multifamily apartment complex. Um, this has generated a lot of feedback from the community. And frankly, I I was not a part of this. This all predated when I joined the council, so I had a lot of catch-up work to do to understand the context and the history of both of these projects and to wrap my head around um how they got to be where they are, that how the decisions were made for both of those sites. And um neither of them have been fully greenlit, so we are listening to information coming in, and I wanted to let you know that I personally am uh very, very seriously listening to everything I'm hearing from the community, um particularly around the book corner site. Um, so if you have passionate feelings about this and you would like to talk to me one-on-one, I want to hear your thoughts on it. Um, you know, there's never a uh, there's never something that you get without losing something typically in um Landy's planning. But I I I want to make sure that this is a decision that the community supports um for both of those sites. Um, so please reach out to me on that if if you would like to talk. Um, and then the last thing is the budget is coming up. May is all about the budget for Beaverton. We are uh facing declining revenues, just like pretty much every other city in the country right now. Um, we're in a really good position to navigate our way through that um because we have an excellent finance director. Um, and we're going to be piecing through it one thing at a time through the entire month of May. And as um when we're done and we adopt the the uh budget in June, I'm going to get on the record to have our our council staff retreat in September to do our goal setting, which has never been done before, I don't think, just to help the departments better plan their budgets. I've been hearing that from department heads saying it's a little hard to to um try and guess what the council wants to do and spend months planning out their budgets and then find out later. So uh hopefully, you know, we'll we'll do that this this year, but um just know I'm working on trying to make that happen. So I know I was a little long-winded. I think I got in at nine nine minutes on that update. Um, if there's any questions, let me know.
I just have one comment. Don't ignore the senior citizens that are in this community because they are valuable. And I realize we need more diversity and we need more young people, but we also have experience and it counts.
I absolutely agree. In addition to being a liaison to this committee, I'm also the liaison to the Beaverton Committee on Aging. And I asked specifically to be on that one as well as this one because um I I absolutely one hundred percent agree with you. And that will not be overlooked on the Climate Action Task Force.
It just seems like right now it's kind of a steamroll. We're just looking for young people to be on that climate task force and frankly, I'm just a little resentful about that because I've got something to say about the climate as well.
And Burgett and I were supposed, we're gonna um come up with false IDs so that we can be on it.
I I think anytime you have a, you know, it's like there's been anything in the shadows and you turn the light to shine it on that. It, everything else feels like it's being put in the shadows, and the trick is to somehow just expand it over everyone and and not shift it because you're just in, you're just shifting inequity when you do that. I think we have historically had underrepresentation of youth um and their voices on our committees for a lot of reasons, not not purposefully. Um, and this is, this is an the, an opportunity to um try and expand youth participation, but we don't want to do that in a way that just takes that spotlight and pulls it away from all of the other volunteers that want to have a voice as well. So, but I hear you loud and clear.
Thank you. Okay, Joe was first on the list, and everyone raised their hands. I appreciate that, so I'm just going to go right down the list, starting with Joe.
Okay, hi, Allison. Um, can you tell me in this discussion about the chain or the 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 area where the book, nook is now, the bookstore, have they talked about another site for that book nook, that bookstore, the Beaverton Bookstore, Library Bookstore?
Yes, so I don't know the full history on the book corner, but it's a nonprofit Friends of the Beaverton Library um location. So they they resell books, the funds go back to the library. And um they, I I think the, it was almost just not a handshake deal, but a long time ago, that particular house, it's a house, it's not even ADA compliant, um that sits on this property was leased to the uh Friends of the Library for like a dollar a year. It's great because all the fu- funds go right back to the library and and that's wonderful. That uh organization in some remodeling that will be done at the library will will be housed within the library. And I don't know what that's going to look like. It's not going away.
All right, well, that's good. It was, it's a real valuable resource because for one thing, you you have, the books are, you know, very inexpensive and the money goes to the library, plus they have DVDs and tapes or CDs, uh, great resource, so I hope it sticks around.
It it absolutely will. And I think that now that there's, you know, remodeling happening and there's thoughts about the uses within the library, it it could become even a more prominent feature of the library, maybe even the first thing you see when you walk into the building, so. Um, and I know that there's going to be a lot of opportunities to provide public comment on the library as well.
Okay, thank you.
There was a public meeting that was recorded that you can watch. Um, you can link to it from the city website about not only the book corner, but all the projects on Fifth Street.
There is, and I believe I I tried to find it, you know, um as coming from the point of view of someone who wasn't familiar with them, it's not easily findable. So if you go to the little search feature at the top right of the website and you put in like Fifth Street Projects or Project C or Book Corner, um these terms will pull up a PowerPoint presentation. I don't think the frequently asked questions forum is completed yet, but they have gotten a lot of questions, uh and I say they, the city and the mayor's office have received a lot of questions, both in that town hall and through email. Um, and they're going to create a list of questions that'll answer a lot of them and also invite others to ask more questions if they don't see an answer that they are happy with or they need more information about.
Okay, Deborah, do you have another question at the top of the list?
Uh, I do. Regarding the roundtable public safety discussion, will that be public?
Uh, yes, roundtables are public. And I, this was, this is not even on the agenda yet. I've just heard about it that uh I I don't think it's tomorrow because tomorrow is all city manager all day long. Um, it might be tomorrow. That's how new the information is. I heard about it right before this meeting. If it's not next week, it'll be the week after. And um I I don't think there is one counselor that doesn't want this to be happening now. It's just, it just hasn't been on the agenda. I think we're all frustrated by that and and we want to get going on it. As far as what the roundtable will be, I think it's more process than anything. It's just getting everybody aligned on what are we going to talk about and when? And what's already been done, what still needs to be done, and what's the timeline for it? I don't think we'll be getting into the details at the roundtable on the report. I think we'll be taking the recommendations of the report and saying, we're talking about this on this night, this on this night, and going forward. And given that May has a lot of budget meetings, uh basically co-ops the entire month of May from other council duties to the um exclusion of, you know, most everything other than like approving the consent agenda and things like that. Um, I have a feeling that these conversations are going to be happening in June and going through summer.
Okay, Sharon, uh, sorry, Burgett, you're next. Go ahead.
Karen is in front of me on my screen. Okay, um, so I had uh two different areas of question. Let me start with the uh finance, the budget one. Um, I was wondering if you can tell right now if there is um more cost with the new form of government um or less cost, uh, you know, with the um with with all the changes.
Um, we don't have a firm number on it yet, and I haven't received my budget packet yet. Uh, but I know it's more. And uh I believe when we were, when it was going before the voters, the estimate was a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I I can't quite remember the number, but it it will be more. There's more that, there's the there's the uh salary for the individual and then additional staff that are put in place, including one for the, or a couple for the mayor's office and potentially for council because those functions went away under the the previous form of government. But there will be like expressly stated amounts tied to the change in government.
Uh huh, that's not how it was told, was it? Okay, great. And second thing um was uh, so I just went to your application for the, and I I had this open already. Can you or will you disclose the percentage, uh, this is for the um environment group, the percentage of people that are looked for? Um, so for example, let's say you you will have twenty people or not, hopefully not that many people, but ten people on the community committee. And how many, what's the percentage of each of these sections you want, like uh the age group, the income group, the gender, the or non-gender and all that, and the ethnicity? Uh, is there a goal?
I do not know that off the top of my head. I don't have it in front of me.
Well, do you have that and can you share that?
Um, I I I'd have to do a little bit of research on it and see what I can dig up and how much information I can give. And I can do that and then send it out to to Lanny and then have it distributed.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, first you see there, but can you do the raise your hand function? And I'll push you right behind Sharon. So the the button, the raise your hands button. See if you can figure it out. There you are. Thank you. Okay, you'll be right after Sharon. Sharon, go ahead.
Okay, um, before I ask my question, I believe from Scott Koller's presentation and Kevin's as well, last month, it was the um fifteen-member uh task force um with recruitment starting this month. But anyway, my question is off of what Eric, he teed me up for this, um, a thought came out of the fact that we not leaving seniors out, I am, I'm a little bit of a concern about Elsie Stur. And I don't know if you can speak to that because I know it's a partnership between THPRD and the city and their who owns the land and who owns the building. Um, what is the discussion that you can divulge at this point as far as tearing it down and having it something else?
I know that there's been gossip and rumors and ideas about that site. There's so much good open space around the building that everyone seems to have an idea of how it could be used. I have not heard anything about tearing the building down. Um, people have thrown out like, well, if we're going to put in senior affordable housing, we should just put it there. Um, it's not as easy that for the reasons that you stated. It's it's a partnership on it, and it's also um, you know, deeper questions about what should the future of that site look like that uh would need a lot, lot more planning and master planning around it, how it fits into the the neighborhood and um just the community as a whole. But as of right now, there is nothing set in stone that says that site is going to change. Um, at at, but I will say that there has been an increased desire um on the part of THPRD and the city Beaverton to work together on, uh, like have a meeting of the minds on occasion and talk about the different parts of town where there's this intersection of uses or um interests in how we use the land and uh Ashley, if she's still on the call, probably, could talk to that. But um yeah, the Elsie Stur has come up because it is, it's part of the crown jewel of of our city, and it's a very important site. And I know people are really eager for it to be completely reopened. But other than plans to reopen it, there, there's nothing that pretends that it's going to be changed from what it is now um to anything else.
Well, I've worked there for the last twelve years, part-time, uh, teaching. And um I had never set foot in it before until I I was asked to teach, and I was amazed at what a, like you said, it is a jewel and sometimes a well-pat secret. And it would be wonderful to have some kind of utilization assessment to see if it even means that uh expansion of the services that are involved in that THPRD realm of um, you know, within Parks and Recreation, seniors are underserved, I believe, in in the system, in the system. And I used to work for the And I used to work for the Eugene Parks and Rec Department for a number of years as well. And there was a senior center there as well. So I'd hate to see that lost. I would love to see it expanded if expansion is warranted.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, Frosty and then Eric, and then we're going to cut off all the comments. So go ahead, Frosty.
Thanks. I want to echo Eric's comment. Allison, because it's not only the seniors, they're your taxpayers. And if you watch what's happening around the country, if you don't pay attention to public safety and support our police, having gone through the police academy and the CERT program, you're going to lose your tax base because people are moving. And as an example, this happened last week. My wife is a real estate agent. There was a house in Greenway that was listed for 475. It went with 108 viewings and 32 offers for $150,000 over the asking price. It sold for $625,000. It's about a 1800, 1900 square foot house that had a big, huge yard. But if you, I mean, we're creating our own problems if we don't watch out for public safety. I've grown up in Portland. I went to, graduated from Wilson High School. I went to Kennedy Grace School, which is now Minutemen's. Drive through Portland and you see what the mess is, it's obscene. Tom McCalls rolling over his grave, if you know who he is. And, you know, you've got to pay attention to public safety. And I think that our police force is, is one of the better ones that I've ever seen. And I think they also deserve to be supporting our school systems because I don't want, I want some, I want prevention, not reaction. And don't lose your tax base because you will. And we've seen cities around the country do that. There's people moving to Arizona, Utah, Idaho because of this.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
I'll be brief. I'm also, I serve on the Washington County Housing Advisory Committee. And I can tell you that the discussion about the senior center, the community center, the community garden and Elsie Stur is a discussion that's just beginning to gestate. There are a lot of plans going forward. And Allison, I know that you will keep a close eye on this discussion, but I think it's a discussion that is just beginning despite all of the plans that have allegedly been put in place already for both of those sites. So I would hope, and I really, really hope that this is a community-wide discussion involving not only THPRD, but the seniors who use Elsie Stur, the people who work there, Sharon, and the people who use the community center as well. That's a discussion that needs to happen. And realize that the ground for the community garden next to the community center is prime gardening real estate in the city of Beaverton and people really grow good stuff there and it's legal. Enough said.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Allison. We all know how to get ahold of you. We all know how to chime in at city council meetings. So thank you for coming. Appreciate it. And okay, Lanny for the city update, 10 minutes.
Great. Okay. I can keep this fairly short. So a few items. One, we very kind of talked about some of the Fifth Street projects that Deborah and Counselor Tivnun brought up, but just wanted to highlight that the April 1st virtual event that was held that featured the different project managers for the fountain renovation at City Park and the senior affordable housing project in the book corner. All those three projects were featured along with the mayor facilitating the event that is online. And I put the, the website link in the chat so you can check it out and see the information and also some of the audience Q and A that was provided. And then you can also submit feedback online about what your thoughts are. And that gets shared with all the stakeholders as well. And the other thing that is coming down the pipeline for city manager recruitment, I believe Thursday, May 13th, you'll be getting an email pretty soon here about a social or a inviting the candidates to be featured for you all to get to meet them online. And so that will be Thursday, May 13th and more details to come. I believe all that outreach will be going out fairly soon. And also if you ever want to just check out regular updates, what's going on with the city manager recruitment, we do keep the website updated with all the details and I'll put that in the chat as well for that link to our website page. And then some other news about our shelter that has been extended through May. This is our Beaverton severe weather shelter. And that is going to extend the operations through actually May 31st. And Just Compassion of East Washington County is going to continue operating the shelter. And they're using the funding from Washington County to do this. And the shelter will be the only site in the county to maintain operations in a group setting with staff and resources available to enroll participants. And so together with the relief shelters offering individualized space, there's going to be countywide capacity to serve nearly 160 adults aged 18, age and older. And this is just to kind of give you context, this is our fifth year of operating this, this shelter. And it's a 24-hour, seven-day-per-week service. And in a normal season, it's 30, serves 30 adults and it's on an enrollment basis. And shelter guests are provided with meals and showers and access to resources and referral to social services. And the shelter is not currently taking volunteers or donations at this time because of COVID. But those interested can check out the website for future needs. And I know sometimes we'll put like some special types of donations that could be utilized. So it is helpful if you can check that out on a regular basis. Or for those of you that are the NAC reps, you can also mention this at your NAC meetings. Because I know some of you, your NACS have been really helpful in being a good, you know, partner with this, the shelter.
Lanny, can you tell us where that shelter is, please?
It's at the community center. Thank you. Thank you, Eric, to your point. So, and then lastly, on my talking point, I don't need to really talk much to this group, but it's about the voters forum. And I don't want to take still any thunder away from Joe because he's going to give a detailed report out. But I had just two items that I might share that I don't think he was planning on sharing. One was, I don't know how many of you saw Bento's video. How many, can, can you raise your hand, saw Bento's video? All right. So I was thinking about playing, we just, TBC TV just updated it. I wanted to give a huge thank you to Bento and TBC TV for helping us come up with a really great promo to feature this event. And it's, let me see how quickly I can pull it up. There's two different versions. One that we did was to highlight, was to highlight the voter registration deadline as well as the event. And then the other was just, you know, just doing a call out to please come join us at our, at our meeting, or excuse me, at our event. Sorry, every time I try to do this fast on the spot, it just seems to not work, but I can do it so fast when it's just myself.
It's called television.
Oh, man. Okay. My apologies. Okay, I'm almost ready.
Is there audio?
Yes, but it's not coming over.
There's the checkbox, Lanny, that you need to check for the sound when you share that.
Okay. Well, I'll try it one more time and then I'll give it up, but I'll try one more time.
Before you share, there's a checkbox on there.
Take your time.
You see that? Okay, so when you share, I can't share. I don't want to share away from you. I think you have to stop sharing and start again. I think there's a dropdown on the top, but I don't want to work you through that. I just learned that myself.
I haven't had to check anything before in the past, so I will look for that. So is it where, where would I see it when I'm doing the, when I?
When you share, it's on the bottom in the left corner. It just share sound and optimize for video clip.
All right. All right. Take two or maybe this is take three. Maybe Eric can do a reminder about how important questions are right now. Someone do some filler.
Well, we've actually been, we've done pretty well getting questions in. Joe and I are working on those right now. The, the problem that we're going to have is that we don't have a lot of time to ask all the questions that we've gotten. So I've, I've basically with Joe's help, we've picked the top topics of the questions that have come in and we'll be asking those. I do have to say later.
Yeah, there was nothing there.
Okay. Look up, okay. You need to take the sharing from me.
Yeah, do you want me, I can give you, make you a co-host.
Yeah, but I, I can't share your video.
That's true. Okay.
So what you need to do is when you share, just share, I walk you through it. Just share it. Okay, on the top where you have your controls, there, there are dots on the right side. Click on the dots and there should be something saying to, to share the, the sound. No, not that's download. Go into the Zoom. Okay, hold on. I have to look at you. You see on the, somewhere where you're sharing, controls are, they might, from the Zoom situation. Okay, I, I'm going to share something very quick and then show you, okay? Is that okay or?
Here it is, optimized for a video clip.
Yeah, and then there's also something about the sound.
Okay, so they're both selected now.
Yes.
And then do I need to click stereo?
No, you just hit the play button.
All right. So both of them are fixed.
Hi, I'm Bento with the Beaverton Committee for Community Involvement. Join us at our Beaverton Virtual Voters Forum on April 29th at 6:30, online at beavertonoregon.gov/votersforum and broadcast live on Cable China 28 in Spanish and Channel 30 in English. This is a great opportunity to learn about a candidate for city council and Toilet and Hills Park and Recreation District. Hear their priorities and ask your questions. It will be an engaging and informative evening. We hope you can join us.
Excellent.
Excellent accent there.
Bento, you're such a natural and I, I think you do it like in one take, you know?
What kind of work on, on the TV last night with all the awards?
Oscar-worthy. Yeah. So, and then I, I think the only other thing I wanted to add was we've gotten some questions why we weren't featuring the school district candidates. And, you know, we obviously, BCCI had to make decisions before, before the candidate. We knew that the school district was having their own voters forum the day before ours. And, and then also we send out, our postcard goes out to the translation company before the candidate filing deadline in order to meet the, the printing deadline because the postcards do the following week after the filing deadline. And so I just wanted all of you to know just some of the marketing logistics that we deal with. And, you know, we're, we're making all these different, trying to meet all the different deadlines and how that impacts. So, because I know some people said, well, we didn't realize that THPRD didn't have, you know, the races aren't, they're not contested. So can you switch? And it was just a little bit too late by the time we realized on the 18th, when we found out on the 19th, you know, everything had already been sent out for translation. And so I think that's just something when we debrief at our next board meeting, you know, when we select our voters forum date, if we want to build in a little bit more time for marketing to have a little bit more breathing room from the filing deadline in order to, to make any changes. If we were to make any, you know, different decisions than what the recommendation of this group was from the prior month. So I just wanted to point that out in case you get asked that type of a question. And, you know, a little bit more of the constraints we were working with as a team, since a few of us were working on that behind the scenes.
I'd also like to add that the Beaverton School District established its voters forum date prior to ours. So they set it up a little, a little earlier than what we did.
Thank you.
And if you want to watch, the moderator of that Beaverton School District Voters Forum is a really good guy. I just want you all to know that.
Is there another moderator in town, Eric? You're the best. No one else, no one else is going to apply.
I heard Geraldo Rivera is moving to Beaverton.
This town.
Yep, Geraldo who? Nope, nope, sorry. Okay, we're going to move into subcommittee updates and right after that, we're going into the NAC reps round robin. So if you do have something, get that ready. Of course, we're going to do some to the reports and we'll start off with the matching grants with Burgett.
Yeah, and we actually had two matching grants from Central Beaverton. And they're really, I thought they were really exciting. And the first one was that I like actually really a lot was a bike-friendly BDA project. They are, the, the project will identify safe routes and place tools along the routes to, to help cyclists in case they have a flat or whatever happens to their bike. So it's really cool. And we are, we approved that project and it was $3,000, just $3,000 for their bike repair stations and pumps and the replacement parts and such things. So, and they matched this very well with all their volunteer hours among those, the people who are involved. And the second grant was about actually what, what was her name, Sharon, Shannon, said already for the events. It's the Pride Beaverton and now they call it Pride Beaverton and Pride in the Park because they're not going to do the parade, but instead they will have circus actually doing three performances and then having also the farm, and this is all at the farmers market, having the farmers market or parking lot used for vendors. And they will also, obviously, everybody will keep the COVID regulations and they, we approved $3,000 for the stipends of the performers of the circus. So it's really exciting, I thought, to see that kind of activity going on. So that's what we approved.
All right. Any questions? All right, we'll move on to Joe for the events.
Okay, well, actually, Eric said a few things already and so did Lanny. I'll just want to, and I want to go back to Eric after in a minute, but just want to say that we, we got confirmation today from Andy Garcia who had not contacted us and we wrote some letters and phone calls and, and he's on board. So it'll be three people. And I think the, the agenda as outlined by Eric looks pretty good. Eric, do you want to add anything to the report for the gang here?
With the three candidates, if we have the three candidates, we're, we're not going to have as many questions. So I just want everybody to realize that we're going to try to get the best questions in and appreciate that. And we're also going to feature a portion of the city council forum where a candidate can ask another candidate a question and get an answer, but we're not going to have a rebuttal portion on that. We're just going to have the answer. And with the THPRD candidates, we're going to basically ask all three of them the same question and see how many questions we can get in in about 20 minutes. So we'll work on that, but they'll all have a chance to do an open and a close as well. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to it. I think it's going to be a pretty exciting night and there are a lot of things going on.
Yeah, I think we're all set. So take it away. Yeah, I think we're all set, so, uh, take it away.
Do you have enough questions for the THPRD? Do you have enough questions for that candidate? Those candidates?
I'm a little light on that one. If, um, I've been digging into some of that on my own, but if you want to help me out, I would be more than happy to take your help.
They were due today, so I figure we, I can submit them before midnight.
That's a good idea. Yeah, tonight, midnight tonight.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I did. Um, I was gonna, you know, last, last year, was it last year when we did the presidential election and, uh, the big election? And, you know, where we got Lacy, um, remember the one, the voters forum? For Lacy, Mayor Lacy's, right? Does anyone remember?
Yes, we remember that, we remember that.
And I know, uh, Lani had sent out a link for us to watch, was it Zoom? I can't remember now what, how we watched it, but I know there was a link sent. And then, uh, are you, are you going to do the same thing?
Uh, no, uh, we're, you, we will be able to livestream it through the city website. And I don't know if we have that technology set up yet.
Okay.
But TVCTV will carry it on Channel 30 and the Spanish, uh, translation will be on Channel 28.
Which I recorded, I remember.
It'll be recorded and so it'll be played back on the city website and also through TVCTV's YouTube channel.
Okay.
And I just want to add one thing that the Washington County Public Affairs Forum tried to have a Zoom debate between Ashley and Jerome, and it got zoo bombed. And it was really pretty ugly situation and it was embarrassing frankly for the forum. But the good news on that is, is that when they got everything straightened out, Corinne, the, uh, Public Affairs President said, well, there is the voters forum, Beaverton sponsors its voters forum and it's next Thursday night. So everybody tune in and watch it. So we got a little free publicity out of that.
That's good.
No, we're not using Zoom technology through TVCTV for the very reason that it can be interrupted by disruptive individuals. So we're using a technology that, uh, TVCTV has been using very successfully for over a year now.
Okay, Lanny, do you have a question or a comment?
Good to comment, I was just going, going to remind everyone to share, um, the Facebook posts. Uh, we've posted on each NAC Facebook page, um, for the, the event. So if you could just share that or make your own post to promote Thursday's event. And then I also had sent out an email that you could, um, uh, do, send out to your contacts. So, um, just as, you know, kind of a reminder, uh, today or tomorrow, to help get that on everyone's radar for Thursday.
And we also put it on Nextdoor, it's okay, right?
That's great, that's awesome.
Okay, Ellen, we're done.
Right, any other questions? Good. Okay, land use, Perry, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, we had a subcommittee meeting earlier this evening. And, um, we, at our subcommittee meeting, we reviewed the wonderful work that was done by Miles Glouacki, take, which, who, uh, took our outline and converted it into webpages with links. And again, um, this is not live, so we were, uh, we were looking at a printout of, of the work that he had done. And he had specified a couple of areas that needed, uh, supplemental information. And so the group, uh, discussed some options that were available to, uh, fill in these blanks. And, um, we've come up with most of our, um, text. So I, I will be working with Miles, uh, to finalize some of that information. And, um, I, I don't think Miles is still with us, so I'm not sure what the next steps are. We did talk about some final work that needs to be done and I, I think after that it might be ready to hit prime time. Lanny, is that your understanding?
Yeah, we were just going to share the copy with, uh, Community Development Department and have their.
Oh, yes, that's right.
And then we would be ready to put it online and go.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we wanted the input from the experts to make sure that we, that we didn't have any errors in there. But, uh, anyway, we, uh, ended up taking the land use handbook and use that for a lot of our resource. So, uh, if anyone hasn't looked at that in a while, it's really helpful. And by the way, Lanny, I noticed that the website, the, the neighborhood resource website itself has been cleaned up dramatically. And I thank you for that. It's, I think, much more, um, user friendly without, I mean, it had some good information, but it was kind of random pieces here and there. And now it's very coordinated and thank you for that. Anybody, any questions or any other members want to weigh in on, uh, where we are? Okay, that's it, thanks.
All right, now we move to our brand new fourth subcommittee traffic calming with Connect.
Um, thanks, um, we, um, uh, Terry let us, um, tag on to her meeting time and, um, we, uh, took the time to look over some of the data that we'd requested about the, um, outcomes of the traffic calming process and, um, also began to share some of the, um, Neighborhood Association comments that people were, are starting to come back as people go out to visit the different neighborhood associations and, and get their feelings about how the process is going. We, uh, will probably need it, uh, we did, I'm not sure if I, a general notice went out, but we did, um, decide to go, um, do our presentation for the June, um, Traffic Commission meeting rather than the May meeting, because we really did want to get the, uh, feedback from all of the NACs in before as much as possible. Um, it, it seems to be that we have a lot of support for looking at the, um, voting method of the, of the current traffic calming process and, um, maybe seeing if that, if that could be tweaked to make it a, a, a little bit more, um, fair to the people that do turn in votes. As it was pretty clear that, um, uh, the primary reason for the failures of some of the other projects was, um, a lack of return votes rather than, um, even with a large, uh, number of positive votes being returned. So, um, that's kind of where we're at. And, um, we will, um, take the next meeting mainly to look at what kind of a, what we should be presenting at the Traffic Commission meeting and what our next steps would be.
Very good, any questions? Nice job, Connect, thanks very much. Okay, now if any of the NAC reps have anything to say, go ahead and raise your hands, we can go around. If there's any big news, any big projects, uh, Connect, go ahead.
Um, I, we had our, um, Taliesin.
Did you say what NAC you are?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm with Highland Neighborhood Association. And, uh, we had a, a, a little park called Taliesin Park that runs in between, um, the, the backyards of a couple of our HOAs. And, uh, last August, we had an ivy pulling project and discovered that we probably need to have a couple more. And so we had one of those, uh, on April 10th. And in the course of that, we discovered that the park had, um, a lot of ground nesting birds in, in its, um, even though it's small and there's a path that runs through it and it's got quite a bit of pedestrian, um, traffic through it, there is, uh, a, a nice little ground nesting bird population there. So we made, um, some plans to try to protect that population and, um, and I'm working with the THPRD. Now that their volunteer program is back up, um, and we'll, we'll probably have another event in the fall.
What kind of?
Perfect, thank you.
What kind of birds are those?
Um, they're mostly wrens. Um, there is one that appears, we're trying to identify, that is, that, uh, we have, we were lucky to have a, a biologist that lives, that has, um, property on the edge of that park. So she keeps a good eye out for us. Um, so we'll know more about that as we go.
Out to Audubon?
Um, pardon?
Have you reached out to Audubon?
We haven't on this project. But we've got, um, Megan with, that's doing the, um, natural gardening Zoom presentation. Maybe she can give us some ideas. And we do have a relationship with, I, I did contact, uh, Toiletton Soil and Water, and they had suggestions about plantings and things like that, that would promote. Ground nesters actually need bushes, not, and not just, uh, a ground cover. So I found that out and she had some suggestions for what would be good choices.
Thank you, that was, that's awesome, good, nice to hear some good news. Okay, Eric, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So, uh, I'm representing the Five Oaks Triple Creek NAC. And this isn't news so much as my, my frequent, uh, plea for help. Uh, we've just had a terrible time getting people to come to our NAC meeting since we went virtual. And it, I know some of the other NACs have been a lot more successful at getting people to come. So I would love to hear if anybody has any advice on, on how to get the neighborhood to participate, how to get people to come to these virtual meetings. I mean, we're, aside from board members and presenters, we get, you know, maybe one to three people each month. So, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
A controversial development startup.
Fair enough.
Yeah. I, I hate to be that trite, but that's, uh, both park issues, uh, over the period of about 10 years, created a lot of interest in. And, and I guess the best thing I would suggest is you've got to, uh, get people to realize if they don't pay attention, they'll be reacting instead of being proactive. And, um, and Lanny, Lanny's great, Lanny's super. And, uh, she and, and Miles can possibly help maybe get a, a, a personal, um, marketing piece or something for your NAC. But, but truly, it was a controversy that, that got our neck, uh, re-energized the second time.
Thanks, Frosty.
Good to have you.
Um, have you looked at, um, Eric, have you guys looked at like changing the timing? It may be that people have commitments that is not, that is making them not to attend the virtual meetings. So maybe you guys might have to review timing. Um, and also how are you, how, how do people know about these meetings? How are you, um, and I've seen some NACs, they have like a board that they put out. I don't know if your NAC is one of those. And, uh, like they put it a week before the meeting, I found that really helpful. Um, so that could be something that you could, uh, you could look at too. But I think the timing might be, because you know, now with COVID and people having their children home or different commitments, you know, times might have changed. That could be why people aren't coming as before, as you were saying.
Yeah, we, we actually did change the time, we, we were before overlapping with the city council meetings. And so we, we changed them. Um, I wouldn't say it's had a noticeable effect one way or the other.
So did you guys have a pretty strong physical representation? I mean, physical meaning, not, not virtual.
Right, right, yeah, uh, I wouldn't say we had a huge one, but you know, we were probably getting, you know, six to 10 people.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and like Frosty said, we, we had something controversial, then you get, you know, 15 or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, now, well, I'm, I'm happy, if we, if we got five, we've gotten, you know, once or twice we've done that.
So, I mean, people don't come for something that is not, I mean, apart from controversial, what could you offer, right? That's really the, the question. So maybe, I don't know, a, a small little survey? Or do you have an email list of previous people that were, you know, there? So finding out what would they be interested in actually, you know, like, so that you can actually cater to that kind of, um, um, interest, you know, is it a vaccine? They want to know something about COVID or, uh, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's just something practical or more, um, what's going on? What can you, anyway, that, that, does that help you at all?
Burgett's got a great idea.
Good idea.
Few things that I've seen that worked is, uh, Highland did a shredding event. And then we did, uh, gosh, it's been six years ago. We did a movie in the park event and there was just two of us initially that, and there were a few other people that helped too, obviously the city, of course. Um, but two of us really put together a, a Gantt chart and started saying, what do we need to do to have a movie in the park? And it grew, um, obviously we had to shut that down this last year. But as you maybe have an event, if you can pull, just even a couple, two or three people together with a supporter from the city, to have something unique that gets people to come, that's another way to recruit.
We did a, uh, before the events committee, subcommittee existed, we had a, uh, Lanny, it was, uh, NAC engagements and something. Um, and we put out, we put out a survey to the city and I think it was to about five or 6,000 people, um, all told. And the main thing was meet people where they're at, do those events. Those events draw people more than a meeting will. Uh, meetings are not the all end all. And the whole buzz on, uh, you know, any of those things that are like, hey, a Walmart's going in, then you'll get a bunch of people. Um, so those kinds of things. And we had, in the Sexton Mountain area, we had, uh, the president of the school board come. And we also had one really small land use issue. And that meeting, I thought the school board would really have more discussion. Nope, hardly a question. It was all centered around that really small land use issue. So you never know what you're going to get. But to Frosty's point, doing those, um, those events and meeting people where they're at, when we can do that again in the future, really are draws.
I, I would agree, I forgot to mention with, uh, um, Ivy weed pulling project, we had 19 people. I was floored, I was floored in August when we had about the same amount. And, um, it's whatever turns people on, I guess.
Okay, Joe, do you have something to add?
You're muted, Joe, we can't hear you.
Joe, you, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, sorry, thank you, too many buttons. Uh, following up on Frosty and Bridget, uh, on what they said, uh, for many years I volunteered for the Sierra Club in Portland. And we had 150, 200 people come to our meetings because we had speakers who gave special kind of presentations that were interest to the local community and also, uh, travel logs, so slideshows. There, there may be something, and I'm willing to work with somebody on this, if we could find a list of maybe seven or eight speakers that might have a real interest in the community or be interested by the community and to come to these various NACs around different neighborhoods. Uh, and of course then, you know, we have to figure out how to advertise it, that might bring in some people. So the idea is some speakers that have a real interest, that, that the community might be really interested in hearing. That's my thought.
Travel, travel, Joe, that is so, such a smart idea.
I got lots of slideshows to show too.
That would be awesome, that would really suck people in, I think.
You know, Eric, the other thing too is food, food is a big draw. And the, uh, BDA and all of the restaurants that are coming into the downtown is pretty phenomenal. And so if you had, um, Kevin Teeter come to one of your meetings and talk about all the coming developments within the, the downtown core and how the west side is becoming the, the place to, uh, to dine. So, use that food as a, as a.
That's a good idea. Lani, what I'd like to do, since I'm the chair of the, uh, event subcommittee, this sounds like an event kind of thing. Why don't I, uh, work with you and put together a little email to everybody and say, look, here's some ideas. And if you want to work with me, you want to come back to me and we, and kind of re, revitalize our events committee. And, uh, and get started on something like that. Okay, she's shaking her head, yes, all right.
Love it.
Okay, great. All right, we'll go back to Eric.
Kind of one more thing, we started, um, asking people if we could put them on our email list, um, with our event. So, um, we just made our sign in sheet have a checkbox. And if they check that box and, and initial, they had given us permission. And so we started to build our, um, email list. Um, and Miles can tell you how much, how big it is now, but it's over 500 people. So, that's another. And we also partnered with. And we also partnered with
Right, Connect?
Pardon?
They all come to the NAC meetings, all 500 of them?
No, I wish they did. You're right about that. But they, but we do get good participation in the events, which is helpful. And, and he's right about the, it's sometimes the agenda will get a bunch of people that are in, they read that, what the agenda is.
Yeah, and Connect, I just wanted to add, when that survey that we sent out to all the neighbors in the city, they did respond that even though they may not come to the meeting, they are reviewing the agenda.
That's what they always tell me, but I think that's true. And also, Lanny, the mailer is something we can take advantage of too, right? So the neighborhood program has an ability to, if you have a special mailing or want to showcase that you're going to have this speaker or something, you're allowed so many mailings to your, to your neighborhood per year for free. And they are, they have a, whoever does the mailers does an excellent job, and that can get people's attention. Just don't send them out at the, at a voting season because they get mixed in with voter ones that, well, who was going to throw those in the circular file? Is that you, Joe? Oh, no, it was Eric, I think.
Yeah, so you know, a couple tools, definitely for all the NAC representatives. Just a reminder, we definitely have, you know, postcards, we have blast emails, we've got the Neighborhood Newsletter that goes out every Friday. We have other newsletters at the city, plus the Your City Newsletter that goes out every other month, as well as the city's social media, and then of course, the individual NAC Facebook pages. So those are just a few tools that are fairly easy to get on the schedule. And we can work with our marketing team to work with the message that will resonate with your neighbors on a topic. And then we always do like that call to action, like come to our next meeting, to the next neighborhood meeting, we'd love to see you. And, you know, different things like that as a way to entice them to come check you out. So happy to talk more. At any time, you can either give, you know, reach out to me or Miles, and we can talk more about what those types of tools are that we've got accessible to all of you.
All right, so keep an eye out for an email to all of you for getting together kind of a speakers bureau of some sort that would, would help us get more people into these meetings. They'll be coming soon.
That actually was part of the original NAC Engagement Subcommittee that got started. What it needs is maintenance.
Great stuff. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. That was amazing. Thanks for all coming together. We all want the same things for our NAC. So we can all learn from that. Appreciate. Thank you for bringing it up, Eric. And thanks, everybody, for their support. Before the meetings, actionable items and dates to remember, anything else? Somebody wants to have a question, comments? Okay, Lanny, last month, we had the restaurant presentation. Could we get that PowerPoint sent out? Because Friday night, I'm like, oh, yeah, I want to go try that restaurant, then I can't remember.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I'll get the PowerPoint from Megan and send that out to all of you.
Okay, that's all I had. So then I'll turn it over to Sharon, and then we'll adjourn. Sharon?
Okay, my notes are a massive mess, a real hot mess. So bear with me. Events, check the links in the chat. And I am going to remind people who may not know this, that you go into your chat, you go to the bottom, you go to the ellipsis next to where it says all panelists. Click on the ellipsis, you can save the chat with all of these links in it. And number two, Backyard Habitat Webinar is May 3rd. You can register. I actually got my confirmation already. It's Monday, May 3rd at 6 o'clock. And then you'll get a Zoom invite. ECCI had the Backyard Habitat folks come a couple of years ago, I think, before they even were in the Beaverton area. My yard is in process under that program, so I'm excited to do that. Council update. Allison said that there were five things, there are actually six. So, and it was quite comprehensive with the city manager applications. Stay tuned for more on that. O dot 217, H R A C with the Public Safety Roundtable Review, and especially in light of the SRO in the schools, Climate Action Passport, get in there, try and get on it. Fifth Street Project, pay attention to that because there are all sorts of things that are in process. And the thing that was added was the broad budget. So that was May going to a June adoption. I will reach out. I see that I got an email address out of the chat for talking more about the Elsie Stur question that came up. The city update had a lot of great stuff, so you can go online as far as the Fountain Fifth Street Project and check that out. And there was a May 13th, Thursday, May 13th, meet the candidates. More information to follow. I think Lanny's going to send that out, I believe. And again, the city manager update. The shelter will go through until May 31st. And that, I got to go on a tour of that. That is a fabulous thing that is going on in the community center there. Voters Forum, Bintu got the Oscar last night for this. Kudos to her. Well done. And so, let's see, Matching Grants, Events, Voters Forum is this Thursday, 6:30. Livestream, pay attention for TVCTV and Channel 30 and 28 in Espanol. Land Use, Miles has looked at creative webpages. Those changes we discuss tonight. That's going to go to CDB for review. Traffic Calming had talked about data. There's a roadshow to the NACs. If your NAC hasn't had one yet, let Connect know. And there will be a June Traffic Commission meeting reviewing the process, especially around the issue of the survey percentages that they're looking at. Oh, back to the event of the, of the month, and that is the Voters Forum. Please, 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 share your posts on social media, Nextdoor, or whatever means you have. Also, just in general, just share, check out resources and share them with others as far as just checking out for things on the website, Your City, Mailers, social media, and check in with Lanny and Miles. They're always available to answer any questions. And I believe that is a wrap.
Nice job, Sharon.
Way to go.
Very good.
Thank you for that every month. What would we do without you?
If I look like I'm not paying attention, it's because I'm squirming on a piece of paper.
All right, if there's anything else from anybody, we will adjourn this meeting. It's been an honor being your chair tonight. Thanks so much for coming. I'll see you at the Voters Forum on Thursday.
See you safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. How good you've been, team.
Hi, everyone.
Thanks everyone for your help. Good night. I'll see you on Thursday.
Hey, Joe. Thanks. Joe, very quickly, if you want help on that events kind of thing, let me know. Because that is
Yes, I will.
That's what floats my boat.
It was like deja vu, like it's full circle.
It is full circle.
I heard the Lightning King music playing in the background.
All right, guys.
Have a good night.
All right, thank you.